Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Chris and Andre Show.
Before we get into it, make sure to subscribe to our channel and hit that notification bell so you never miss a thing we post. See you on the other side. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to the Chris and Andre Show. As always, we are your loyal hosts. My name is Chris.
And I'm Andre.
And this week on the big rant, we are here to tackle the subject of school boards and the battle that seems to be being waged across America for control of them. That's like the most news anchor intro I feel like I've ever done to diet on the Chris and Andre Show. We discuss the battle for school boards that wages on across America.
We're gonna keep it because the question I have to ask is, are you scared yet?
We know who you are. We know who you are. You can leave freely, but we will find you and we will never be able to.
Everybody. Enough, enough.
Don't put masks on our kids anymore. Cause I'm telling you what, I'm a mom who's fearless and I will come after you.
You're allowing child abuse. You're allowing child abuse. You're allowing child abuse. You're allowing child abuse.
Our school system is for educating kids, not indoctrinating kids.
And I think it's a very important topic. When you think about it, the GOP in general, I actually read something on Twitter yesterday that was funny. Uh, this guy is like in his sixties and he says, uh, he goes, I've been a Republican since like, uh, the sixties ironically, and the Democrats have been coming for my guns, my guns since then, and they've never taken them. So I will say that I will give it credit to the Republicans. They know how to play the long game. Roe versus Wade is a good example of it. Uh, school boards, the topic of tonight's big rant is another, uh, big part of that puzzle. And I think, and I would, you know, just, you know, I would make a couple of assumptions. One, most people don't care or think about local elections. When you think about local elections, you want to be thinking about, uh, county commissioner seats, school board seats. Yeah, those, those are the two big ones because those are the keys to the kingdom because most people do their daily life in their municipal, in their municipality. Uh, I almost said like a Lee and lost. Just say the word, but I did not, I didn't do that. Use all your words, but I didn't do that. Um, but so I, I think that it's important for people to know. Where politics gets crazy and it gets dangerous is one converging point. Most people will not do their homework on broad issues. They will stake their flag in the ground on that hill on one issue. While the rest of the game is moving around them. And I think that that's where we get into these, uh, these, these blips in our history as a country. So just something to think about.
Yeah, it's, uh, something that has, that is certainly near and dear to my heart. I know that your kids are all out of, uh, like, you know, high school at this point. So I don't know that this, you know, like, doesn't have that same direct impact necessarily. But I know that it's, it's definitely something that obviously concerns you because this was something you wanted to talk about. Um, but with, you know, uh, one kid that's in third grade, just started third grade and another one that will be starting school in a few years. The, this whole turmoil around school boards that we've seen really become more of a volatile kind of battleground, I guess, over the last two years.
Yeah.
Is certainly something that's caught my eye. And during the last primary election here in New Hanover County, it was something that I paid really close attention to in terms of who I was voting for. I did look into each of the people that were running for school board and, you know, um, the county commissioners boards and stuff like that, trying to get a better understanding of where people kind of stood on some of these things. There were some, you know, like red flag words that popped up on some people's websites. It was like, oh, you just disqualified yourself right there. But some people were a little bit more nuanced about it and you never know when it comes to voting, what it is that people are saying that's just to get elected and to get the votes that they need. And then how they're actually going to behave. It's not like anybody holds them to that. That's an end voter really, other than the next opportunity that they have to vote them out. Uh, it's really at more or less at the behest of the, you know, uh, committees that are funneling money to them. Or the conventions and stuff like that, you know?
So one thing to think about is when you have, when you look at the democratic conventions for each state or the Republican conventions for each state, the runway typically is city councils, school boards, county commissioners. That's their bench. And if you can get these, and I don't want to use the word extreme, but I'm going to use it. If you can get a platform based on ideology, actually I didn't use extreme, to, uh, to set foot, that can become your platform for your next uh, potential office. And then if you think about the, the way that we, we get like most political front runners into the public eye, the school board is, I, I want to say it's the second spot before you start running for a state office. Uh, or actually county and sometimes some people are so talented. It's, it's almost like the NFL draft or the NBA draft. Uh, you use those offices as your proving, your proving ground. And then you springboard to the next, uh, part of your career. What's interesting is that most people don't even think about it. I can't, I'm, you'd be surprised. I don't have numbers. I don't want to make up any numbers. Of how many people that don't vote and local elections and/or midterms, people generally focus on federal and that is, that's a pretty damning thing.
I'm only going to vote on things that have the least likely impact on my action, like the least likely ability to impact my day to day life.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, uh, you can't, you can't go wrong doing that. So ladies and gentlemen, if you hear like any noise in the background, I am still in the middle of a remodel.
Chris is going to do his best to clean that up.
But for the things that don't make it through.
Yeah. Uh, so it's funny, you were talking about people not paying super close attention when it comes to like school board and, you know, commissioners and, uh, town councils or city councils and stuff like that. I have a, I guess, uh, what I would, an anecdote that I can share. So my dad, when we were living in Northern California, it was a small town, um, but a fairly decent sized county, El Dorado County, um, you know, outside of Sacramento. And he was really good friends with the superintendent for the school board or for the, the school district and he, she convinced him to run for school, a school board opening, basically. And he did, you know, like he did some live, I don't know, it wasn't like debates necessarily, but yeah, like town hall style things. Um, did a little bit of promotion, but for the most part, I think it was just kind of like, I don't know how, how committed he was to it. I think it was almost more like, well, I'll run and if I win, I win. And if I don't, I don't. He had friends of his that didn't know that he was running, who saw a Robert Smith as a candidate and were like, that seems like a good guy and just voted and then later found out it was him. So I think that just kind of underscores what you were saying, but it's like, a lot of the times people have no idea who it is that they're voting for. And I mean, I was one of those people for a while there where I didn't spend a whole lot of time looking at, you know, my local elections and thinking, oh, who are these people that are going to be, you know, kind of influencing the day to day lives of the people around me and my kids. And, um, I think over the course of this podcast and just our, you know, continued conversations about these things, it certainly helped me to have a better understanding of just how important those races are and how little importance I, or how little it ultimately matters who's in the White House. I mean, I think we, we've talked about this a few times over the last couple of years now, or a year and a half, where it's like, how much have things actually changed for us? Because Joe Biden is in office, right?
Right.
And, and that's going from the mad king, you know, came with their own style to like the old king, I guess, in a lot of cases, but.
So if you think about, so I'm going to do like a, um, non-historical timeline. The country goes through segregation and you, you see the, you know, like the, the, one of the most famous lies are, are that Democrats voted for segregation and slavery or slavery then segregation, true, but not entirely true. You had the quote unquote Dixiecrats and you have the, um, Southern fundamentalists is what I would call them, where they were just like, well, we just don't want black people in our diners. And we, we just want to be separate, but equal, which was never true. This battle led to what I would say, oh crap, the National Guard is forcing school integrations. And the only way to fundamentally, let me just throw like an insert there. You start to see laws like redlining, you start to see, uh, you know, blatant, like targeting in separations of entire towns. Case in point, Winston-Salem had the largest and the, one of the few black owned bus, uh, companies in the, in the country. And like to this day, highway 52 in Winston-Salem separates the city, right? I lived in Winston-Salem. I, I lived on the, like, but close to Baptist Hospital. And when I would drive home every now and then I would, the first time I did it, the first time I drove through Winston-Salem as a resident, not a visitor, I noticed, noticed the big difference between the two. So if you live on one side of 52, it was not urban, but more under, underserved. If you live on the other side of 52, when you're getting, going towards Stratford Road, Robin Hood Road, you start to see like more of, you know, affluent neighborhoods and things like that. I lived in a neighborhood called Ardmore, which is kind of a, like a, uh, it's like Five Points in Raleigh, right? An older historic neighborhood. But those are remnants of Jim Crow. Those are remnants of segregation. Well, in that history, you also see that most of the Confederate statues in this country were erected in the fifties and sixties. They weren't erected during like the time of the civil war. They were erected like when people were saying, well, we want to make people, and this is hyperbole, I don't know, but we want to make people feel uncomfortable. We want to make them know, we want to let them know our stand on, on how it, how we feel about you being here. The argument today is moot. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense that, um, people still like the, the, the conversation has been said that Germans don't have the Nazi flag in Germany.
It's literally illegal to fly the Nazi flag in Germany or like to have Nazi paraphernalia of any kind.
But in this country, we are, we, we, I don't know what the, the right term is to say that we, um, well, we make accommodations for people that want to have the Confederate flag.
The state of North Carolina, at least up until somewhat recently, yeah, was still selling license plates with the Confederate flag on it, if you wanted as a custom plate option.
So when you look at that history, you have two things that, that drove out of it. You had the people that were racist. And they figured out that we, the thing that we can do to make ourselves still part of the conversation is to control school boards. Then you had the people that were, uh, I guess socially conservative and that birthed the, the abortion argument. Now, I don't want to get too far deep into abortion, but case in point, Michigan just passed, or a judge in Michigan just said that the 1931 law in Michigan that made abortion like illegal, there's a permanent injunction against exercising that law. So abortion's been a long, long-term argument, but it was, and it kind of festered off until like the, uh, Brown versus education. So all that to say this, there are, there's a segment of our population that is staunchly racist. Period. Even abortion laws, they don't really target, not, they don't really target, uh, white communities.
Right.
They, they target non-white communities. They target communities of that are, or I guess the term now is underserved or underprivileged or whatever. The, the reality is they're, you know, lower income communities. So we got to, we have to stop ignoring the fact that these things are longstanding issues and, and racism is still an issue in this country. Abortion unfortunately targets, you know, like, I don't know, low income people, predominantly non-white communities, and it's a way to criminalize them. School boards, schools in general are a way to, it's, it's, it's the irony of the whole conversation. Like DeSantis is talking about indoctrination. Well, but what do schools do? Schools lay the found work, a foundation of education with plenty or lack thereof. And the indoctrination typically comes from, or will benefit the people that have like, you know, that they're actually not poor.
Right. I mean, either way, right? I think schools, even if it's done somewhat, and maybe indoctrination isn't the right word in that case, but I feel like that's, it's kind of the job of schools is like, okay, get kids up to a basic education level where they kind of understand how our current society works and
Right.
like indoctrinate them into being not hellacious little psychos.
So Matty will tell you this, any, any given day of the week, even in, even in his college experience, school is a form of indoctrination. It's a way of changing, forming, shaping thought, right?
Right.
So indoctrination is not a bad word. It's just, it's the fact of the matter.
Yeah.
It's all what, what, what changes is the topic, right? So if I can control the topics that you're going to learn or your, your perception or viewpoint on said topic, I win.
Yeah.
And that has been the long game of like, uh, I don't want to say Republicans, but I'll say the GOP.
Yeah. I mean, I think you're right to not pin it exclusively on Republicans. I mean, even blaming just the GOP, I think is, is excluding all of those groups that basically carried that mantle before them, right? This is, what the GOP is basically working on right now is nothing that's really new. It's just a continuation of all this like pent up anger and aggression and frustration pinpointed at other people, right? As opposed to like the actual source of the problem. It's taking the people and making them the problem as opposed to understanding what it is that's really at the root source of this. Um, I thought it was interesting that you, you know, what you were saying about racism and the fact that we do obviously have a fairly still thriving contingent in this country, um, that is racist. Uh, because this push to kind of take over school boards was driven by two things over the last couple of years. Really, I think it kind of started with COVID, right? And wanting to get kids back in school immediately because God forbid that you be asked to take care of your kids at home. Um, I understand not everybody had that option. Some people still had to go to work and therefore you were now required to find, you know, babysitting or, you know, nannies or whatever it is in order to be able to go to work. But I think that also just speaks to the whole issue that we basically treat the public education system and schools in general as nothing more than a fancy daycare for our kids.
Well, inherently yes, because that's like, that's, so the short history of what I know on public schools, well, there, there was a time in our country where in order to be able to be competitive, you had to educate, right?
Sure.
Uh, you know, communities that were agriculturally based, they need their kids, like if you look at our whole school schedule, it's based on agricultural like needs.
Right.
Um, which are few and far between.
Air conditioning.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, but, but I also would say that, uh, I, I was never a fan of year round school, right? So once something's actually ingrained into your system, you kind of have to accept it for what it is. I think that year round is a, a bandage to the problem. And I'm going to like actually contradict myself here in a second. Because
I love it.
It doesn't, well, because, because the, the amount of, all right, I'm going to, here's my contradiction. Charter schools are bullshit. Like you can't say that we're going to have a, a level playing field and which is public education. You cripple some districts and some schools or, uh, you know, schools that are unfavorable to you. You criticize them and say, well, I want to homeschool or I want to send my kid to a charter school. And then you take public funds. No, you have committed to your journey, fund your journey.
Right.
So that's my contradiction. So I kind of get it, but I kind of don't get it. So there's a lot of, and things need to change because we're not a society based on agriculture anymore.
Right. But I, just to be clear, year round school is not exclusive to charter schools or private schools.
No, it's not. So it's a big mess of we, we're not solving the problem of, you know, we have, every state has got their own curricula. That is, that may or may not help people to advance. Every state has funding problems and we've talked about it ad nauseam about how property taxes fund and, you know, like Wake County is more wealthy than, uh, new, even New Hanover, right?
Yeah.
And I'm sure the school quality is better. No offense to anybody in that county, but we have more funds available. But at the same time, we're still like fighting to get, you know, employees to, to teach our children.
Well, and you guys probably also, I mean, you have a larger population, right? So you have more schools within that school district. So I, yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me to look at like, what is the average funding per school? Or anything like that comparing Wake County to New Hanover. You're going to look that up because of course you will. The other piece that I thought was kind of interesting, just in terms of talking about racism, I was saying there were two reasons that we kind of see this battle for school boards right now. One was COVID and then the other one is CRT, right? And not cathode ray tubes, um, those big, big butt televisions that we all used to love. But no, uh, critical race theory and the idea that, you know, teaching, if we just stop talking about racism, then we can move past it. We being society, not, you know, the non-white people. Because the white, I mean, us white folks, like we, we moved past racism forever ago. Like we were all like, you know what? Yeah. Racism. That's
Thanks Obama.
But we're good now, right guys? Like we had a black president.
Thanks Obama. It's all his fault. Because, because of President Barack Obama, racism is no longer a thing.
Dead. How can you say we're a racist country when we've now had a black president and a uh, black vice president?
Yeah, we're, we're not going to talk about that.
Never mind, you know, how voting works in this country, that it's not a unanimous decision sort of thing.
So fun fact, so according to wrl.com, updated October 28th, 2021, North Carolina is the fifth lowest in spending per student. I'll leave a link in the comments or in the, uh, something.
Description.
Description. So a high poverty school spends $11,193 per student where low poverty schools spend $10,450 for $10,450 per student. So if, and I don't know, if the average income for the state or the country is, uh, $55,683, I would say roughly five percent of the counties in North Carolina are at or above that, that average. So that gives them a unique advantage when it comes to their educational system.
Yeah. I think to your point about charter schools and people basically saying like, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to put my kid in public education. So I'm going, not only going to take them out and either homeschool them or put them in charter school, but then I want my tax money back that would have gone to that. I want a voucher to go to a charter school.
God, that's annoying.
You know, whatever it may be. And I think we were talking about this the other week. And I liked my analogy, so I'm going to repeat it here on the podcast, but you think about it like, right, our taxes pay for lots of different stuff. They pay for roads that I may never drive on, right? They pay for police. I might not need to call the police. Right? But that doesn't mean that they're not providing some service that I actually benefit from. Fire department, right? Maybe my, maybe I'm fortunate. My house doesn't catch on fire. That doesn't mean that I should be able to like get a refund, a tax rebate at the end of the year because I didn't use the fire department, right?
Right.
And I think education in a lot of ways, public education is the exact same thing. I just don't think that we look at it in that same like service type of way that we do those other things. I mean, roads are not the same, obviously. But if we're focusing on like police and fire, then I think that education can very much be put into that exact same boat where it's like, you are not funding your children's education specifically, but you are making it possible for there to be a public education system. Like that's
Or even better yet, for all these quote unquote patriots, all these people that say that America is losing the competition war. Like you need to contribute to make sure that we're, we're competitive as a nation.
Right.
Right? Because the, to do the opposite of that is hypocritical. Uh, to say that a private school or a charter school is the only alternative, it kind of makes that gap even further. And I think that's the hypocrisy that I see when people mention charter schools, when people mention, uh, private schools. Do you learn more at a private school? No. You know, one of my sons, he graduated, his graduating class was less than a hundred students. Like, think about that. Like, that's weird. Like, that's really weird.
That is odd.
I mean, so to have less than a hundred students graduate, so I mean, that tells you like the, or maybe, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't huge. I'll just say that. And maybe it was close to a hundred, but I mean, he went to a private school. My, uh, it's just like, what's the benefit here? Like, how do you can, how do you contribute to the nation's overall wellbeing at that level?
But it be, it stops being about that, right? And it starts being about the individuals, right? It's, it's all about my children. And, and this is not, you know, this is not to say like, oh, well, just, you know, throw your kids to the wolves and hope that they come out alive. No, like the, the point is figure out how to get
Fix the problem in the schools.
Yeah. How to get better funding at the schools so that you can actually pay teachers so that they want to be there, right? Like get involved in your PTOs or PTAs in your school organizations, like this, it's not necessarily run for school board. That's one way, but there's a lot of different things that you can do. Like I try to take every opportunity that I can to volunteer at my daughter's school, you know, and that's like, I, when they are doing the Scholastic Books Fair, when they have Field Day, like if they send home the thing, asking for
I'm going to go to, uh, I'm going to go on a sub rant.
Yeah.
This state literally, I, I don't know when, actually.
Oh, we're talking about the lottery, aren't we?
The lottery.
I knew it.
Every so North Carolina votes lottery into place. So North Carolina votes lottery into place.
This was easily, right? That, that signed it in, so. It was post two thousand.
It was a terrible idea. So we, we now.
Did the same thing that the education lottery does in every state where it gets signed in.
My point being is like. It's not just the same funding that we had prior to the lottery, but it's less funding. They took money from the education budget and moved it to other programs in the state. And now they're running out of deficit for education. I don't get it.
This is gonna generate X millions of dollars every year for education. But it's not X million more, right? Very careful when they phrase things.
Yeah, we're exposing what we're spitting on education, but it's not a surplus. It's not in addition.
We're not adding to what we currently already earmarked for that. Because, oh, it turns out that that money can go to a lot of different places.
Right. It can go to subsidize the tax cuts and credits for, and I, and I blame both Republicans and Democrats. I don't believe it, it's rational to make tax concessions for companies to move to the state. I just think that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have struggled to, I think, understand. What the end goal is. I mean, like you can talk about jobs, right? Uh, the job creation, you know, oh, we're gonna give them a tax, you know, uh. Break so that they'll build a giant building which will create jobs and then they'll hire people which will be more jobs. Not to, you know, never mind the fact that the building of the building is only temporary, right? They're only gonna build that once. And then the jobs that they hire, I mean, yeah. Okay.
So three thousand people get a job, right?
Right. Is that worth like essentially bankrupting? Part of your state budget for? I know it's not the whole thing, but you know what I mean? Like, Apple, right? Apple got a huge tax, uh. Incentive to move to North Carolina and, and Raleigh Durham area RTP kind of specifically, right?
I think it's a hundred and fifty employees. And they're all PhDs.
Never mind the fact that when we're talking about the lottery, who actually funds the lottery?
Well, who funds the lottery is, is, is tertiary, right?
My point is that what you're basically doing is removing the tax burden from everybody. For education and placing it almost exclusively on lower income families to pay for public education. I know, I mean, I, and this, you know, the whole lottery thing was not really meant to be part of this conversation, but in the big rant, we just kind of go wherever things take us.
That's gonna, that's gonna frustrate me because. I'm like twenty times more pissed off.
I'm sorry. I mean, but that was the first thing I thought of when we were sitting here talking about it, because you brought up. I mean, and you think about it, those are the communities that nine times out of ten need more funding for. Their education programs. I mean, New Hanover County. Schools isn't, is now being saddled with a Title Nine lawsuit claiming, uh. Racial discrimination in terms of educational facilities. That basically they funnel more money and put nicer facilities in the high income areas or the white areas. And that they just kind of do whatever else they can in the non-white areas.
So I, I want to be careful, right?
Okay, but I'm still gonna be Chris.
Okay, I'm, call me careful from now on. I'm careful at Chris and Andre Show dot com. Here, here's what I want to say. I, I think that, and I believe this firmly. You can't run around calling people racial slurs. But you can definitely segregate, abuse, discriminate based on financial class. And over the last twenty-five years. We have really made that easier and easier to do in our society.
Yes, well. Sorry, go ahead.
And I, and I believe that, you know, we need to be very. There, there are some things that are compartmentalized into a white, non-white. Situation, but a vast majority of them are based on your economic like stature in society.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's certainly been a shift. I, I almost wonder though, is it an intentional shift? Or is it more just that, that it's like, well. It, we can't really filter out the low income white people without making it just blatantly obvious that we're being racist. So if we have to hurt a few, you know, low income white people while we're at it to, you know, keep the non-whites in their area.
Trump is the, uh. The wild card when it comes to that. Because he actually plays to grievance politics. If you're broke and I, and broke to me, we talked about that in our last, um, you know, big, big rant. Yeah, you're gonna probably be susceptible to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I know that as a, as a broke person, I would easily. Connect on an emotional and intelligence level with a, you know, self-made billionaire, millionaire. I don't know.
But you're, are you mocking me or you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I'm mocking you.
I just, I just want to be clear on that.
I'm not even really mocking you. I'm mocking people that sit there and fall for that shtick. I guess, more than anything, because that's all it is. It's like, oh, I'm just like you. I, I started out with nothing but a million dollars and I turned it into. A few more million dollars and never mind the fact that nobody actually knows how much I'm worth because I won't release my taxes or. You know, any of this other stuff. By the way, would you like some toxic, top secret documents? I could, I got them at a good price.
I swear to God, I don't want to talk about that clown at all.
We'll, we'll put a moratorium on, on. That speak from now on.
But I, I will say that, uh, my, my point. If you're financially, so for example, you know, let's, I'm gonna try to just go from like one level backwards. So if coal was the economic driver in my community. The country and the municipality didn't move away from that. And somebody comes to me and says. I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably buy into that. But if my municipality said, uh, this is probably not gonna work out and, and what can we do to like. Responsibly attract new business to our community. People are less likely to be influenced by the, the vitriol.
Sure. I think the big issue is maybe not so much the first half of that, that this isn't gonna work out. But the second half where it's like, and what can we do to fix that? I think that in a lot of those cities and towns, municipalities. Even states, I mean, West Virginia, right? Like that coal country. And yet their goal is to basically like figure out how to bring coal back, you know? Like they want to send the children back into the mines.
That's not all West Virginia.
No, it's not. It's not just West Virginia and it's not all West Virginia. You're right.
Kentucky also, it's, but it's.
It's like, like if your town was famous or your town had made a bunch of money by raising horses. And Henry Ford comes around and you're like, curse you, Henry Ford. We need to go back to the old reliable horses, like. Maybe that's not a great analogy.
It's not, but it's funny.
But yeah, like.
It totally is not, but it's super funny.
But it kind of is, like at the same time.
Won, we wouldn't have like, I don't think it'd be in the, yeah, climate crisis we're in.
Well, that's fair, although I mean, horses produce a lot of methane, right? Maybe not as much as cows, but.
And probably not nearly as much as like automotives.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think at the end of the day, I'd rather step in a pile, puddle of oil than a, a pile of shit.
That's fair. So the, the last, I mean, the, the, the last stronghold you have when your society is changing becomes schools. I, I used to say very fervently that. My mom is like she went to, like she lived in a time where, when schools are segregated. She had kids. And I'm pretty sure that the people that were pro segregation were just as racist as, as they are now. They have kids. Eventually they would die. My mom is still alive. I'm not, I'm not wishing death on people. I'm saying like, that way of thinking is longstanding. And the way that you kind of, you steer things towards that direction of keeping whatever you feel is safe and. Quote unquote, American value. Is to teach people a different version of history, is to. Like have confusing and clouded laws, like the, the, the. The nickname of the don't say gay bill. I think most reasonable people would say, yeah, there's some, there's some merit to that. Both sides screw that up, right? Both, both sides completely, like make, one side made it a, uh, oh, you're anti LGBTQ and you, you know, you can't. What if there is a same-sex, same-sex parent household? I don't think anybody's like against that, but I do think that there's some. The issue that people were trying to address or that was brought up. It got bastardized and it turned into something that wasn't supposed to be. That's sad. Do I have a solve for that? I sure as hell don't. The entry point is the school. DeSantis did not attack or address or try to. Create some boundary zone and something that most reasonable adults deal with. He went directly to the schools. Why is that? Right? Uh, I don't have the answer to it, but I can, I can guess. When you look at a lot of the, uh, you know, the CRT conversations, nothing to do with nothing. The entry point was what? The schools.
Was a lot like what we saw in the past couple of national elections, right? Like. It's a whole lot of talking points. With the goal of getting people spun up around them, right? CRT is gonna teach your children to hate themselves. It, it's gonna teach them that they're racist just because they're, they're white, right? Or that.
Which is a praise, probably can't be far off.
I mean. I would argue that just because you're white doesn't mean you're racist.
I know, I, I'm being an asshole.
You're just being funny and I would just, yeah.
White people stop doing racist shit.
This problem anymore, right? Stop calling us racist and we'll stop being racist. No, that's not the solution.
Yeah, that's not how that works out.
No, um, I just. I don't know, man. It's, it's one of those things where I. I do, I understand people's fear, right? You know, like fear is such a motivating factor for.
And it's cheap to sell.
Oh, yeah, and easy, you know? I mean, like it's. You just, you don't even have to sell the whole thing. You just have to plant the seed. You just have to create the, the, that. Just speck of doubt in somebody's mind.
And or confirm what's changing.
Yeah, or, yeah, or confirm an already suspected belief. That's the other element. But I wonder like how much of this could have been avoided? If instead of when a kid comes home with a tough question or. Talks about something that their teacher was teaching them in class. The parent didn't run to Facebook or whatever internet platform of the day suits them to rant about it. And instead went in and sat down and had a, like a heart-to-heart conversation with the teacher about it.
Uh, I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why that's probably not a thing. So when we, we had lunch the other day. On Panacea, sorry, I didn't get to order anything. I, I really am.
My quiche was delicious.
I, I've regretted it every day since, but. Uh, we were talking about just some issue and I actually said, and as a parent, I have to ask is, is my child gay? So adjacent to us, probably thirty degrees to my right. Was a gay guy and I, I, you know, because I'm a paranoid New Yorker, I just kind of scanned around. He looked at me when I said that. Now, in his mind, he probably could have had. You know, a lot of things he wanted to say and it just made the assumption that I was. Some, you know, homophobic type person. But I'm saying as a parent, like there are things that you, you have to be able to ask your kids. Doesn't make me homophobic, just make me like, I, I want to know. I don't want you to feel like you have to. Quote unquote, come out. I think that's weird.
That, that, that's something for you to be ashamed of or that, you know, is going to change the way that you feel about your children.
Right, so. That's why, because you have people on both sides where they're so victimized. Uh, even, and I'm not trying, so please don't try to come after my black card for this, but. It's very easy to become a victim in our society. Because unfortunately, we listen to the, the minor of both groups, like because they're the loudest. And. For me. I'm okay with being uncomfortable, but addressing the issue. Right? But I did notice that gentleman, like there's a, I went to a restaurant, uh, a, a quick service restaurant yesterday. And. The person that took my order. I'm going to assume is gay. Seriously, fingernails done, very, looks very, you know, feminine, wearing makeup. And when he, what, why are you shaking your head? I'm gonna keep on, like, and I was like, hey, well, thank, and I said, thank you, sir. I was being polite to him because, like. If he would have said, well, I identify, I'm like, alright, well, I appreciate it anyway, but thank you. He did a great job. I'm okay with like, I'm not gonna play the pronoun game with people, but I want to be like at least, I don't want to stop being courteous. Where I can, but I'm also open to the fact of like, if that's not how you associate with life, then let me know. And I'm like, okay, I can accommodate for that. And so I, I think that are. And I, but I've thought about those things. Like, those are two instances where I can see where society. Is rewriting the roadmap of how we interact with each other. And it's only rewriting that because there's so, so much animosity.
Well, because I think at, at the end of the day, people are afraid to be uncomfortable. Not you, but I'm saying that people in general, I mean. The number of times that I have been on Google News and seen some story from some. Bullshit website that just reposts other people's TikToks, like when they blow up, right?
Oh, Daily Dot?
Yeah, I think it is Daily Dot or something like that. Where they're talking about, oh, you know, Starbucks worker goes viral when she, you know, puts a customer on blast. Or, you know, server freaks out because customer gets upset when they're out of something. You know, and I'm like. Why does that even register for anybody? I mean, like I get if you're a Starbucks, I mean, I'm a former Starbucks barista, right? Like. Yeah, I get it that it was really annoying when people would come in and order certain things, but I never. Like there was somebody we worked with at the time, I say we, because my wife and I both worked there together. Who had a, uh, an anonymous blog. Where they would go on and like just rant about the people that came into the store that day. And, you know, all the little nuances of things that these people did that drove them nuts. And yes, like as a service employee. There are things that your customers do that drive you absolutely insane and you want to reach across the counter and shake them. And say like, don't you understand how frustrating this is for me? But you can't because then you lose your job. You probably get arrested. But it's in large part because people have A, been accustomed to thinking that the customer is always right, which is not true. And B. Because we aren't comfortable having those conversations and be like, hey, you know, this drink that you order every single time you come in here? It takes me fifteen minutes to make it. And ultimately, these four things that you're doing. Make it ten times harder for me to do my job the rest of the time, right?
So what I hear you saying is that. So what I hear you saying is that Starbucks is analog to our school system.
In a sense, yeah. I mean, not, not directly, but I just, I don't know.
You are. It's fair, it's fair to say. The expectation is that, you know, like, and, and maybe I'm dumbing it down. We expect a certain level of quality. We expect somebody to cater to our needs. And we're frustrated with the unmet expectations.
Yeah.
But we're not willing to ask why that expectation is unmet.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yes, you are, you are right. And, and I guess by association, so am I. So yay me. No, but I think, I mean, again, like I think it comes back to like, why are people running for school board, right? Because they want to control what it is that teachers can do in the classroom, not because
But you know what's missed upon them is, is a parent that has seen four kids graduate high school and college and then, or five graduate high school, four graduate college, is that your job as a parent is not to dictate the path. Your job is to give guidance.
Right.
And
Guardrails, if you will.
Uh, sure. You, you can, you could say that, but I, I think that, you know, and I say this from, as a, as a parent of five children. I can only give you the opportunity to have the opportunity. I can only make sure that you can have the resources available to me, available to you within reason. It's not my job or my function to help you to disseminate the information.
Yeah.
It's not because, you know, the, the biggest thing I could say is like, when it comes to, and I won't say religion, but I'll say faith. My kids, as they went through college, started to question things that I was not, I, I didn't co-sign. And I'm okay with that. But my job is to say, well, this is what I believe. You guys, you guys see how I live out what I believe? Not to convince them or, or trick them into, or, or just get them to co-sign that.
Right.
And I, and I think that the school board, it plays, it's played a hefty role in control, like you said, to feel like, oh, we are not going to change this. We're gonna, we're gonna save this course. The, the crappy thing in, in any student of history will tell you, social norms and social edict will dictate policy.
Right.
10 times out of 10. Well, because I believe it, right?
I was just gonna say, all the political discussions we have on this podcast.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Pretty much every single one of them. But it's true. It's absolutely true. That's the beauty of it is that you're not gonna be, you're not going to force society back into the box that you want it to be in through control of the government. That's not how this works. What that ultimately results in is rebellion, um, revolution. Viscerate the proletariat.
Those, those are strong words.
No, they are.
I, I know you say it with jest, but, but I was, I, I would say that,
I mean, how hard during the 50s and 60s, right? And even before then, did people of positions of influence ultimately try to prevent integration? Right?
Doesn't matter because we, we have a weak spot in this country and the weak spot in this country is money. My grandparents were, they did well for themselves. They had money. They can, they can change. So
Why do you think Alabama's football team isn't all the white guys?
Yeah.
Cause they realize they can make a hell of a lot more money winning games with, you know, other players.
Dude, they're black. I mean, like Alabama, Georgia, they are like, I mean, come on.
Seriously though, I mean, like that's a whole, that's a whole fricking thing, right? I mean, look, ACC basketball, right? It wasn't like every team in the entire conference signed up at once.
And I don't care if you go to Duke. The people that are getting on the board are, are not white. And it's, but it's not, but to be fair, because I, I'm also, another thing I'm very conscious of now is the us versus them when it comes to non-white communities. And that is getting dangerous. That is getting, so I live in Wake County and where I live in Wake County, I've seen more and more Eastern Europeans. Right? Wake County is probably gonna be like what I see Chicago as in every visit to Chicago I've, I've ever been to.
Love Chicago, by the way. It's great. I thoroughly enjoyed it. Lots of good vehicles.
Sure. So, but what's interesting is my immigrant wife pretty much says this a lot. She's an immigrant. She's from Peru.
Tea you're putting on that word.
My, my immigrant wife is like very aware of the fact, you know, to be fair, our views on immigration are completely different. But she makes a
She's a fan of closing the borders. Now that she's here.
Yeah.
You don't have to share your wife's views on immigration. You're welcome to. I was just making a joke.
So I'll tell you, but the joke is actually very close to, likes are true. My wife came here legally and she has a different point of, of like,
Yes.
And we have, we have family members that have come here both legally and illegally.
See, this is another, another opportunity where King of the Hill comes to, comes to my help.
But her views are very, um, they're poignant that like, it's like, that's a good argument. I would have never thought about that, right? My views as a Northeasterner is like, yeah, but people talk about like Latinos and Latinas in, in the South, but go above the Mason Dixon and it's a bunch of Eastern Europeans, right? North Carolina is probably rewriting and redrawing the Mason Dixon line. Because in Wake County, there is an epic amount of Eastern Europeans here. Epic.
And
like more so than ever.
Yeah.
I wonder if the views on immigration will change in this state because of that fact.
Well, and look at the Southwestern Asian influence.
Yes. But in our, in Wake County, RTP like, eh, okay, they're gonna let that pass. But when you have like the general population, right? We're in a, um, what was, one of those, I think it was TJ Maxx a few weeks ago, walking through and like I heard 10 people speaking Russian. Like tense, like set or groups of people speaking Russian.
Was that triggering?
No, it just kind of made me feel like I was in Chicago. So I, I don't, or it, either Russian or
Yeah, some other Eastern European dialect.
Yeah, it wasn't German. It wasn't, um,
Could have been Romanian or
Yeah.
Yeah. Understood.
And not a linguist, but from my, my ear tells me that's Russian or that's Eastern European. That's not a, a language I know. So I wonder what happens in five years, basically.
Right. Well, and that's, that's where I think you look at the Southwest Asian influence in Wake County, right? I mean, over the last 15, 15, 20 years in particular, probably even before then, I mean IBM, right? Was bringing a whole lot of people in, um, at that point, but it's, I mean, there are,
Morzil, for example.
Yeah.
Morzil is predominantly like Asian.
Yep.
And that, that's everybody from that region and it's predominantly Asian.
Yeah.
The surrounding cities and towns are depending on what they want to be called. It's, it's becoming, well, I can tell from my town or city or whatever, I don't know what we call it because I don't know if there's a tax benefit to saying you're not a city, but you're a town.
I thought it was literally just, uh, like a a population thing, but
I don't know if that's necessarily true because Kerry's technically, Kerry's technically a city, but they
But they call themselves the town of Kerry.
The town of Kerry, right? So, but I do know that Apex is becoming like, it's got an influx of these Eastern Europeans. So it makes me question, I, I don't know. It's a different topic, but my, my point being is that there are things that change and how we accept those changes should not be, the the determining factor should not be ethnicity, right?
Yeah.
It should be for, you know, some, some level of equitable like exchange. Uh, and most people could probably, you know, sign on to that.
Well, and I think there's this perception that, you know, individuals feel like, well, I'm losing my voice in my community, right? That like by this influx of people from an area that is not the same as me or that, you know, didn't grow up here that somehow like, that's diminishing my influence on my own community. And I think there's a couple of things. One, like, yes, communities are going to grow and change over time as are their makeups. And so that's bound to happen no matter what. And two, you're not necessarily like losing your own individual voice. It's just that the peep, the, the number of people that think like you and vote like you and look like you might proportionally be smaller than it used to.
So I would agree with all those categorizations except for think, right? So my, again, remember
I did say think, but
You did. So I would agree with all of them except for think like you.
Oh, okay, cool.
They're quote unquote, like my wife's views on immigration, like we don't converge all the time.
Yeah.
When you think about like the quote, what traditionally are called conservative values, they span across, you know, demos and, and ethnicity.
Yes. So where you, like, yes, I mean, oh my God, like you look at some, some families from Asia, right? I mean, like extremely conservative in
Right.
The way that they try to like kind of manage their household and stuff like that, like, yeah.
Maybe they should be called, uh, historically traditional, right? Cause I don't think conservative is a, a valid term anymore.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would agree that the, this, this idea between conservatives and liberals, um, I mean, it's, it's, I think we've always kind of struggled with it somewhat on this podcast where calling, uh, like democratic voters, right? Like we're all technically participating in a democratic process. So aren't we all democratic voters? But the fact that you have the Democrats and the Republicans makes it feel like, I mean, ultimately, if you took things at face value, you're voting for two different styles of, of government. Neither of which either party actually subscribes to like ultimately. It's not, it's not a true competition for those things, but, um, yeah, I just, I don't know, man, like I, I think, you know, like we were talking about earlier in terms of the school boards and like that being kind of a feeder program for other positions in state governments and then eventually moving up to the federal level if you wanted to. And we've seen that time and time again. You know, there are lots of other jobs or positions within the government that you can find that don't lead to those sorts of things, but I think it's, it's a combination of people who have, you know, a bee in their bonnet about a certain thing. I've never used that phrase before in my life.
Like I was about to lose my shit. I'm like, what the fuck are you talking about? Why would you have a bee in your bonnet?
Someone who has a stick up their ass about a certain topic. Or someone who, who does have those aspirations and is trying to figure out like, well, how, okay, these people started here. That's where I'm going to start. Um, I think, you know, I, I would say it's akin to when you look at the presidency, governorship, right? Like if you really want to be president, you typically want to try and be governor of a state somewhere. Because those are the oftentimes the people that are paid. It's not exclusively, but a lot of the times that's, I mean, am I wrong?
Three. We've had, well, I, I would, eh, I think I fundamentally disagree on that. I think with the exception of Trump, possibly Jimmy Carter. Okay. And Nixon. That they, well, Carter is a tough one.
Best president of our lifetimes.
I think that what we're missing there, yeah, I'm gonna ignore that statement.
Yeah, that was a joke.
I think the, the, the where they, they probably all should converge is on leadership, right?
Okay.
It's very rare that a leader has the deficiencies of a company guy. Basically.
Say that one more time. It, it's very rare that a leader has the deficiencies of a company guy.
Deficiencies of a company guy. And a company guy is a guy that's like slobbing and knobbing just to like get promoted, right? And I, I would look at any career politician as a company guy. But somebody that's got leadership could probably come off the street and, and do a good job. Now, I'm gonna say something very hypocritical because I did not vote for President Barack Obama. He's got strong leadership qualities. Like, like unbeknownst to me, twice. This guy, this guy wasn't rocking with the guy.
Yeah. And I mean, like we, I think we've discussed, you know, how we feel about the, the ultimate efficacy of his presidency, like, but I agree that like, I think part of what made him so, what made people so enamored with him was that perceived leadership that like this is somebody I
Not perceived. He's got complete, like if
Well, right. Sorry. When I say perceived is, I mean, as an, as an N voter, right? Not having had direct experience with him and, you know, witnessing that leadership, but, but that, that man just exudes that leadership confidence.
Yeah.
And so that's something that I think people were very eager to get on board with.
I, I miss it twice.
Yeah. I mean, like we can't, we can't all bat a thousand, right? No, and again, like, I mean, despite all of his amazing leadership talent, right? Or ability. We both still sit here and say, wow, eight years and what did we get, you know? Like we got the ACA in its bastardized version.
Yeah, I felt, I've, I feel like things weren't so chaotic. I mean, those are
Right. Yeah. We had some level of like, oh, I could go around the world and travel and not feel like I need to wear a Canadian flag shirt all the time. Eh?
Or feel embarrassed, right? Yeah. So
Which literally the two presidents that sandwiched him left us feeling that way, just to be clear. George W Bush, this was when they started selling the US traveling.
The last 18 months, man, I was like, with, with GW, I was like, eh.
And I voted for him.
Me too. I thought he was like, he was just tired.
Yeah. I mean, like I, I don't know. I still wonder whether or not that was a job he ever actually wanted.
Sure. Give, give or take, but on the flip side, his post presidency has shown a lot of leadership.
Yes.
The, the, the challenge, I would say, when it comes, and a president would be a good example. How do you? How do you kind of evolve into a space and place in your life to where you can be objective? Another good example, speaking of evolution would be Serena Williams, right? I'm not a tennis fan, but a couple of weeks ago, like I sent a text like, yeah, I'm not a tennis fan, never watched that joint. But I kind of feel like I should have watched her play because I want to kind of understand the story. Tiger Woods, never been a fan, I don't, of golf. I, I kind of felt like he was another sellout, if I'm being honest. But his story now is intriguing and, and maybe that's age and wisdom. So there, there is a, the, the human part of me has compassion and it gives people the leeway to grow. The question I would have for myself, this is an The question I would have for myself, this is an onerous, okay. You're willing to bend on some of these things. Do you really believe those? And what would it take for you to say, you know, for example, extreme? Trump has garnered some type of respect.
What would it take for you to?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and that's like me testing against my own measure.
Yeah.
Right? Because I can't be so
Being shit. It was, what, 2020? When you and I sat here on this podcast and were like, honestly, I thought the whole world would have ended by now because of this guy. So at the very least, he hasn't achieved that. Little did we know. Was coming down the pipeline.
Yeah, he had way too much runway. So, and, and so I, I think that
But trying to be objective, right? Like trying to put our own biases aside and say like, okay, yes, like, did I vote for this guy? No. Did I feel like he was the second coming of the Antichrist? Yes. Like
Yes.
But
Every day, to this day, I still do.
But at that moment, could I sit there and say like, okay, he hasn't let it like, or not even though he hasn't let it. It hasn't all gone to shit yet, right? Maybe that's like the very lowest bar that you could have set at that point in time. But it was still something that we were willing to consider and admit on a recorded platform that we then published to the entire world. Like you can go back and listen to that stuff. You can't watch it because we weren't on YouTube yet, but you can go back and listen to it. That we literally said, we're like, yeah, I, I thought we'd be a lot worse off than we are right now.
But right now, today, today?
Well, yeah, right now, today, today, yeah. Like I think we're all, we're all, you and I are certainly well past that.
The hypocrisy of, and to kind of like tie it in or touch like school boards. The long game is dangerous, right? Uh, Democrats slept on abortion.
Yeah.
And the, the old adage of those who forget history are doomed to repeat it. You could probably expound upon that and say, uh, those that don't pay attention to the signs are probably going to run into a brick wall. Like you, you just gotta understand that the, the people that say they're going to do these things are probably going to do them. And it takes, if our democracy is to survive, people have to go out and do, you know, do the work. So stop being that person saying, I'm going to do the work and change. No, fucking do the work. Do your homework. Like research that to the extent that you know what's going on with the Kardashians.
Whoa, whoa, why?
Well, because
Why do I need to know what's going on with them?
Well, I'm just saying like the, 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 the flyby person, right? I can tell me the, the latest like Kanye BS and, and by the way, fuck Kanye.
He's been popping up all over social media lately with this stupid meme of him wearing like the, the, this huge like winter coat in the middle of summer.
Fucking, I just, I'm so fucking, he's so boring. Like be a dad.
No.
Somebody asked me, somebody asked me a couple of weeks ago, what's your, what's your beef with Kanye? I don't give a shit about his music. I'm not hate on the fact that he's financially successful. I, all those things are irrelevant to me. The thing that I can't respect and I will not respect about Kanye West is as a dad that has gone through a divorce, you're playing yourself, you know, like straight up, nobody, I don't want to fucking hear shit about you. I don't give a shit if Adidas like jocks your style, whatever. They pretend like you don't exist. I think you're a piece of shit. Like, so, I mean, yeah, that's kind of how I feel about Kanye. Oh shit, while I'm at it, Donald Trump, that motherfucker needs to go to prison. If you're sitting around, if you're sitting around, or at least getting fucking indicted, if you're sitting around, Kyle, this clown, if you're sitting around like, uh, you know, pretending like DeSantis is the third coming of Christ on some bullshit, you just sit back and ask yourself, what are we trying to accomplish here? Right? If your objective is to oppress people and to keep some level of standing.
That's what Jesus was willing to want.
You, you will definitely, and I hope you do, you will fail miserably. In this capitalist country, and I'm going to end my, my thoughts with this. One thing I've learned is that not having integrity will cost you in the end. Right? When I worked for McDonald's, there, there's a, when you check your, like when you go from breakfast to lunch, you do something, or you do food safety. And it used to be called in the food safety, uh, like workbook or manual, uh, beef integrity. And there was one day I said, oh, that dawned on me now because Jack in the Box just got sued. They like, they were, you know, they're, well, they're still in business. I'm not sure how. But because of, uh, you know, not doing food safety.
Right.
But the word, the, the, the part of the workbook said beef integrity. And integrity to me is you are what you say you are, right? And
And in this case, you also are what you eat.
Sure. Yeah. Or you want to kill people or, or have them like shit the bed like six days a week. So for me, I, I look at things as are in my public life and my private life, I'm the same person. So if we weren't recording, put it, yeah, we weren't recording, we weren't putting this on YouTube. I would say what I think, I would, you know, with
This is literally the same conversation we would have, like, with a few less fourth wall breaks. But yeah, like ultimately, I mean, both of us, right? This is something that I, I struggled with for a long time. Living what I felt like were two separate lives. I had my work life and the persona that I kind of portrayed while I was there, and then I had my home life and
Right.
You were the person who ultimately pointed out like, isn't that exhausting? Like, don't you find it just so tiring to constantly be measuring whether or not you're doing things right? Because you can't, you know, you're like, you're balancing it against two different scales essentially, maybe more. And it was like, oh, wow. Yeah. That is really true. And I don't care for that. Like, and I mean, when you, I think it's, it's different when you're an individual contributor, you know, in an organization. I think it's a little bit, maybe it's a little bit easier, maybe it's not. I think over, over the long haul, it's still going to be exhausting. But I think especially when you become a leader and you're managing, you know, or, or having to lead a team of other people. That's where it really starts to kick in because ultimately you're having to make these judgment calls on a regular basis, not just on your own behavior, but on the behavior of the people that work for you. And then you're measuring both of those things up against both scales. And when you have two scales that ultimately don't balance out, hey, Moon Knight, how you doing? It gets really messy, you know, like it gets, it gets really, cause you might sit there and say, well, at home, I'd be perfectly okay with this person's, you know, behavior, but this is the workplace and I have to put on my big boy pants and weigh things out that way. And it's like, why? Why have two different sets of metrics for that? Just
That's, that's completely irrational.
Yeah. Sorry. I didn't mean to go off on a tangent there, but that's what we do on the big round.
That, that's completely irrational. And I think that, you know, it's the issues we have as a country are fixable. The problem I, or the root cause I would say is that people are just, they're understandably tired, exhausted, afraid, uh, concerned, uncomfortable. And that's fine. But just figure out a way to kind of address what you're like, you know, uncomfortable with, afraid of, or just like work it out. It's not that hard. And maybe you come up with an answer that you don't want to like really rock with, but that's fine also. Like there are times where I'm like, yeah, I don't like the, you know, I called Chris today because we had a thing and I tried to not make myself uncomfortable with asking questions because I feel, I feel vulnerable when I have to ask a question. But I need something to happen. It's like, hey, blah, 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 and blah. But I'm okay with that. I just address the fact that, hey, you're going to feel, there are times I'm socially like, and I'm noticing over the last couple of years. And it could be because I keep like, like spending time writing code or whatever. I think that's part of it. I'm losing social cues, like the nuance is missed on me. Like I, I don't care. I, I need to accomplish whatever. But I, I can, I can acknowledge it and remember that when I'm interacting with people.
Yeah.
It, it's not good. Like I know like, all right, long-term, you need to figure this out. But I've noticed over the last few years that I'm struggling with being an introvert. I'm struggling with social cues. Doesn't make me panic. It's like, oh, that's, that's you feeling like super uncomfortable now. Like how do you deal with that? How do you work around it? So, but we have the ability and the, and the, the power to change those things. So that's what concerns me. It's like, yeah, sure. These things are, they seem like they're like super big, but they're really not. They're like, uh, they're, they're day one type of things. Like you, you know, you feel that way. Just, just deal with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I don't know.
So before we completely wrap stuff up, um, something that we've talked about in the past that I think this is, this conversation in particular is maybe a good way to like start trying to solve some of the, the problem, but like what, what, what do you feel like is the response? The right response from people who don't want to see their local school boards or their local town councils, you know, overrun with people that they feel like don't match the community's overall goals. Or that are pushing agendas outside of their own. I mean, I'm, I'm going to say at surface value, right? Like get involved yourself. Whether that's at the base level of volunteering at your children's school or just the school that your kids don't go to. Um, or running for some sort of office, but do you have any other, any other thoughts in terms of like, kind of what, what do we do to? I mean, like, look, I, I
I would say, I would say this, I would step back one level, right? So if we're, if we're going to say we're on a team, that team is the, uh, the United States.
USA, USA, USA.
Are you contributing to that team? Schools contribute to the team, right? So most of us will die.
All of us will die.
Yeah, well, most of us will die at some point in our lives when we're at a level where we can actually contribute to society. Some of us, some, some of us will not.
Yeah.
Are you doing your part to contribute to like helping us to maintain this experiment, right? Uh, and I, so the, the reason I phrase my answer that way is because I was, uh, reading and something on Twitter, there's a comedian that died like last night in his sleep, caught his Netflix special. And it was actually pretty funny and he said some pretty insightful things. He was 54. I'm 46. I'm like, so I, my God, that's depressing.
Yeah, stop doing that.
Yeah. It's, so I'm going to take a, a week off of Twitter. But as a parent, my job is to make sure that my kids have the opportunity to have an opportunity. And the things that they're, this, I'm going to say their moms because I've been married before. So my job and their mom's job is to make sure they're, they're able to contribute to society. That's number one. So if what you're doing, thinking, believing, acting on doesn't help the future, then you should question that. Number two is to be engaged in a healthy level, right? So your, your perspective, number one has got to be, what is a long-term objective that we're trying to accomplish? Period. Stop. Right? The second part is how can you help? So if we could figure that part out, I think we'd be in better shape. My, my children are, they're amazing. They're smart. They're all adults and I, I believe that their moms and I have done a good job of trying to make sure they're, they're, they contribute to the, the, the good things we can do in the country. The second part is what can I do to like influence in my sphere, like more things that are positive? Uh, this is one example because this has been bothering me. Most people don't know what they're angry about. They don't, they don't know what they're upset about. They don't know what they're afraid about and talk about it, right? There is a game being played with most people and they can't see past the starting line. Move to a, like this, this is a tough one. This is like part two or number two A. Move to places, live in places where like education is going, if you have children, you can influence and give them a, a better start. So that sounds hard and tough and whatever, but I'll, I'll be, I'll be serious. Like, I mean, a lot of people, like my grandmother, my mom's side, she moved from Georgia outside of Atlanta to New York. You know, during, uh, Jim Crow, a lot of blacks moved from the South to the North for a reason. They suffered. I'm sure it wasn't easy. I'm sure it was more expensive. Take, make some sacrifices to, to, to see this beyond the starting line, but to like see beyond the finish line. That's hard. So, yeah. Those are two things I would do. And if you're white, I, I don't have any beef with white people. Like I, I want to be very clear when I say that. Uh, my wife tells me sometimes that I sound like I'm like being really rough on white people. I don't have beef with white people. I'm saying like, look, the, the word ally is it's short sighted. Do the fucking right thing. Stand up for what's right and not what's expedient for you.
I know that you don't hate white people. Hell, some of your best friends are white people.
Yeah. Shit. But I'm, I'm trying to speak truth. It's just like, hey, expedient is not justice.
Well, and that's right. The truth is not always comfortable.
Right.
It's, it's not your job to make the white people around you feel like they've done enough.
Right. And don't feel guilty. Shit.
Right.
You don't have to feel guilty for slavery, but just fucking acknowledge it.
Yeah. That's, I think the whole point.
That's a low fucking bar, right?
It's a really low bar. Um, and it's something where I think in, in a lot of ways.
Fuck, you can't even own a slave because it's legal. Just acknowledge it happened in our history.
Yeah. What I was going to say is that I think like in a lot of ways, white people, some white people, not all white people. Um, hashtag not all white people. They are more comfortable being guilty than they are doing the right thing. You know what I mean?
That's fair.
Like they'd rather just feel guilty about it than change anything about the way that they behave and interact with other people. And ultimately it's like, well, if I feel guilty about it, then that means that I'm in my soul, like I'm uncomfortable with this and that level of discomfort that I have to live with on a day-to-day basis is my penance. I don't know.
Now get some Jon Stewart courage, right? Like I've, I think I've watched the Jon Stewart, like, um, berating of Congress, like 15 times. Not that he had a lot to lose. So Jon Stewart, like, all right, uh, John Oliver, you could learn a lot from Jon Stewart.
I think he did. I mean, he was on a show for several years.
That's fair. Um, but he probably skipped a couple of classes.
He's got to go back and
Yeah. You know, you got to repeat a second period. Nothing to lose, but he put it all on the line to say, this is wrong. It's not about partisanship, period. It's about the difference between right and wrong. So if you're a human being and you know the difference between right and wrong, hopefully your parents taught you. Figure that out. You can't stay too far off the lines. If you're a Western Christian and you've actually read and studied your Bible, you know, the difference between right and wrong. If you're a person of faith and you know the difference between right and wrong and you choose wrong. and you know the difference between right and wrong and you choose wrong, you, you gotta figure that out. So I'm not seeing from anything more than this simply. And that should be, first of all, Chris, that should be a clip. It's, we gotta, we gotta get to the, the beat of the problem. The difference, like, what I think will fix a lot of the things that we deal, we deal with in life is not about your personal preference or your personal opinion. But do you know the difference between right and wrong? Like, that is a fundamental core question. And if you don't, like, figure that out for you. And if you do, err on the side of doing the right thing. Like, that's, that's where, that's where true life is. That's where true happiness and joy is. Don't, don't go for expedience for like, oh, this'll make me feel better. No, what's the difference between right and wrong? So, yeah.
When you said Western Christian, all I could think of was like those, uh, old-timey pastors from like the wild, wild west.
Well, that's what you see when you see Joel Osteen. Got him.
Got him!
Fuck Frank, and fuck Franklin Graham. Got him!
Got him!
I mean, uh, Crefflo Dollar, fuck him too.
Got him!
T, TD Jakes, fuck him too.
Got him!
So, I'm saying like.
I like this new segment of the, the Chris and Andre Show where we just say fuck you to whoever it is that we don't like this week. It's the opposite of Iraq with us.
Yeah, so, uh, the only person, I'm not gonna say anything about somebody because I don't want Cube coming at me, but there's some questionable things. Yeah, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to start beef with Ice Cube.
Yeah, fuck that shit.
I'm not built like that.
Next thing you know, you're gonna be calling out, uh, was it Daz and Maro?
Yeah.
Those guys fucking roll hard.
It's not about fear, it's about like, I don't know if we'll have the right dialogue. I may say something where it's like quick and I meant it. But I mean, I get the opportunity to, like, explain why, so.
I just don't want to be like Jonah Hill in Catch Twenty-Two or Twenty-Two Jump Street.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't want that smoke, yo. I'm just saying, if you want to hit me up Ice Cube, I can tell you what I think and maybe we can have a dialogue about it. I love that. And I say that with all sincerity. We're probably not on your radar, but I say that because I believe there are conversations that should be had.
And I will definitely tag you in all of our Instagram posts from now on.
So I'm gonna end it with this. I saw this video today on Reddit, uh, this, this dude, uh, it had to be Atlanta or, or Georgia. He was at a corner store.
That's racist.
And like, and, uh, well, no, it was like one of those, like, it wasn't a trap spot, but these kids tried to jump on him. One dude beat up like ten people, yo. It was the help, most hilarious thing I saw on Public Freak Out Today.
That's not a subreddit that I'm following, but I will be right after this.
Yes, because it was hilarious. It was like the most baller thing. I'm like, yo, those, those kids were, they, they stepped on a lion's tail, yo. Uh, but anyway, I'm glad you guys joined us. Again, these are just thoughts I ha- I've been having and I think that they're important for people to kind of like, you know, poke around them, like, just check and see what's happening. I do want to say shout out to Leon Lush. Yo, you, like, you and your, your, your channel, the main channel, and the Lush Family Channel, like, nine o'clock at night before I go to bed, put that joint in the Roku. You and your wife are bananas. I appreciate it. Thank you for doing that. People have better conversations and, and, and be okay with being uncomfortable. So, yeah, you can catch us on, I'm gonna take a break from the Twitters because I'm tired of hearing about Donald Trump. Oh, yeah, Donald Trump. You can eat all the bags of dick, uh, because you're a piece of shit. Fuck Donald Trump. But yeah, you can send us an email if you have comments or questions at comments@chrisandandreshow.com. You can send me some emails, nice emails, at andre@chrisandandreshow.com. Thank you to all the people on Twitter that have liked things I've put, you know, this show has put on Twitter. It's easy to troll idiots, but, um, fuck MAGA too. Chris?
Uh, you can reach me at chris@chrisandandreshow.com. You can send me anything and everything. I'll check it out. I don't think I've ever gotten an email that wasn't Andre testing whether or not the forward that he sent up, the redirects were working. Um, so I don't know if that means that you guys don't like me or what, but you know what? Like, I'm fine living in this uncomfortable conversation that we're having right now, face to face, you and me. No, um, for real though, you can, you can find me there. Uh, I do generally manage our Facebook and Instagram accounts. I have not been on Twitter except for like right now because I just remembered that Andre's been on there like throwing shade left and right. And I need to go take a look and it's, it's pretty good, it's pretty good. So if you don't follow us on Twitter, uh, at Chris and Andre, Instagram, the Chris and Andre Show, Facebook, the Chris and Andre Show. Search Chris and Andre Show, you'll find us. We're everywhere you want to be.
You can listen to our, uh, our audio. We are hosting on fireside.fm. We record on riverside.fm.
Look at that.
We are publishing on youtube.com. You can see my ugly mug, Chris's dope t-shirts and all the cool comics he has in the background. And we're getting ready for football season. Cause you know who's about to, well, I don't think they're gonna go to the Super Bowl, but I, I can wait. Denver Broncos. Anyway, uh, my, and my Yankees are like, I, I don't want to do that. But anyway, we're super glad you joined us. As always, I'm Andre.
And I'm Chris.
And we'll talk to you next time.
Hey, guys. Thanks for watching this episode. In case you ignored my previous instructions, make sure to subscribe to the channel and hit that notification bell. Oh, and don't forget to tickle that little like button. And if you have something to say, you can drop it in a comment down below. See you on the next one.